Thank you very much, Troy. Welcome, everybody. It is Tuesday, June 25th, approximately 1:30. And this is the Board of County, Douglas County Commissioners Business Meeting for the State. Let us come to order, please. To begin today, we're going to start off with an invocation delivered by Reverend Filiberto Solis of Christ Rock of the Ages. And Reverend, I know that you do have a Spanish name for your church. Please feel free to give us that in Spanish so that it's said correctly for everyone. And then I understand you're going to have a prayer for us in Spanish today.
I'm going to pray both in Spanish and English. And thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Reverend.
Let's pray. Padre misericordioso que estás en el cielo, que eres bueno y que eres el Dios de misericordia, de sabiduría, buscamos tu ayuda hoy. Por favor, ayúdanos con tu sabiduría a cada uno de los aquí presentes. Danos claridad para efectivamente tomar cada parte de la agenda de hoy. Que el Señor ponga nuestros ojos en cada acción positiva desde la última junta y sea favorable a los resultados que se realicen aquí. Querido Dios, por favor, ayuda a cada uno a aplicar tu sabiduría. Oramos esto en el nombre de Jesús, nuestro Señor. Amen. Heavenly, almighty Father, who art good, merciful, and the God of wisdom, we seek your help today. Please come and let your wisdom fall on everybody here. Oh, Lord, as we gather for this meeting, give you clarity to effectively tackle each part of today's agenda. Let, Lord, point the eyes to every positive outcome since the last meeting, and let this favorable result and development encourage every heart in this room. Dear God, please help everybody here to apply your wisdom as decisions are taken in all matters and the plans that are made. This we pray in the name of Jesus Christ our Savior. Amen. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much, Reverend, for those words of peace and grace to begin our meeting today. It is very much appreciated, I assure you. All right, let's, if everyone will please, stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, turning to the county attorney for certification of the agenda.
Yes, sir. The county attorney has reviewed all items on the agenda, and the board has appropriate jurisdiction on all overall matters.
Thank you, counselor. Do the commissioners have any disclosures for any items on this agenda?
I have none.
All right. Thank you, commissioners. Nor have I. Going to our first item in our agenda, which is ceremonies and proclamations, we have a resolution proclaiming July 2024 as Parks and Recreation Month. And I have, and turning to staff for introduction.
Thank you, commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity this afternoon. Sorry about that. Thank you, commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to present this resolution to you this afternoon. This is a resolution to proclaim July 2024 as Parks and Recreation Month. Since 1985, people in the United States have celebrated Parks and Recreation Month in July to promote building strong communities through the power of parks and recreation. This resolution recognizes the more than 160,000 full-time park and recreation professionals, along with the many seasonal workers and volunteers that maintain our country's local, state, and community parks. In honor of this nationwide event, the attached resolution is provided to proclaim July as Parks and Recreation Month in Douglas County. In attendance this afternoon, we have Park Advisory Board members Karen Hickman and Jared Taylor. And also in attendance in the audience here are seasonals, technicians, supervisors, managers, and administrative staff who make up the 40 county employees who work in parks, trails, and building grounds. In addition, this group of hard-working, committed professionals provides safe parks and trails for 7,000 reservations annually, 77 miles of trails, 1,388 acres of parkland, 2,729 acres at Ruder Hess Reservoir, 24 athletic fields, 140 special events hosted, 36 volunteer events hosted, and 3 million visitors annually, which provide about $24 million in spending in the county. Staff and advisory board members are available for questions or comments from the board.
All right, questions from the board for staff.
You know, I don't have any questions for staff. Thank you so much for sharing that with us. I invited all of those who are deeply involved with parks in Douglas County to be here with us today, and that was supported by both of my colleagues. The reason for that is you are the reason that our citizens get to benefit from an amazing series of amenities throughout Douglas County related to parks and recreation. You work incredibly hard in heat like this today to make sure that our citizens have places to go for them and their families. We wanted to honor you specifically today as part of this proclamation, and also specifically honor our department head, Terrence Quinn, as well as Steve Schultz with Parks, and of course, our leadership with our Parks Advisory Board. That has been really tremendous, what you all have done, and together, I think we have some of the best parks in the entire state. So thank you so much.
Commissioner.
I'd like to thank all of you for being here, but more importantly, for what you do for our residents. I know whenever you have had your events at the park, when the staff have put together the thank you events, the thank you breakfast, and I have shown up for those, I feel such a sense of camaraderie from all of you towards each other and towards what you do for your job for the citizens of this county. And I try to get all of your names right, and poor Chris is never sure if he's Chris or Curtis, but I always know it starts with the C, right, Chris? So Morgan, I remember you were sitting in a truck at the Sheriff's Department parking lot one day, and I walked up and knocked on your window, and you rolled it down and thought, oh, my gosh. And I just said, I just want to know who you are, because you all have a personal desire to do good for our county and our residents, and I want to know who you are. And thank you for being here, and especially thank you for what you do for our parks. I remember when my granddaughter was little, taking her to the park, and not only hearing her squeals of joy, but those of other kids doing the same. And that's what you do for our residents. So thank you so much for being here, and that's why it's important that this month is dedicated to what you all do for us. Thank you.
In 2019, I was still a member of the Cass Rock Council, and I attended the National League of Cities Convention that year in San Antonio. And one of the guest speakers said something that has resonated with me to this day. And he talked about his whole concept of his lecture was emotional infrastructure. And his basic thesis was, listen, we can do everything in American government to make our communities safe. We can do everything in our American government to make our communities work. We can build the water, build the wastewater. We can pave the roads, keep the lights on, make the trains run on time. And it would be like our communities are nothing but boring Battleship Gray. And so he introduced this idea of emotional infrastructure, of what do we do as a community that's beyond just basic, boring Battleship Gray? What do we do as a community that gives our lives a degree of meaning beyond our families, our friends, our professions? What do we do to come together as a community to give our lives meaning and to make our lives better and greater? So he had a whole laundry list of things, and a lot of that stuff, we ain't doing here, guys. I do not see opening up the Cass Rock Ballet or the Douglas County Opera anytime soon. But I think we made the decision many, many years ago here in Douglas County that our parks were that emotional infrastructure, that place where we can find refuge from so many of the trappings of the modern world, that on a day like today, oh, yeah, the air conditioning is great, keeps us comfortable, but it can create that sterilized world that is dull, basic Battleship Gray. And I think we do a really good job here in the county. And for those of you who are our Parks employees that are here today, for the members of our Parks Advisory Board, and for the Parks Management and Development Team, I know you guys get up every day and you go to work, and you're focused on, what am I doing today to make this community better? And don't mind the echo, it's in stereo, you guys get the bonus plan today. What are you doing to make our community better, to make it the place that has meaning beyond, you know, just our friends, our family, and our professions? So I absolutely appreciate having you guys here. I'm actually very happy to just state right away that I absolutely support this resolution. And Steve, do we have arrangements to hear the resolution?
We do, Commissioner, if you don't mind the Park Advisory Board reading it.
I think hearing from Jared would be great. Now Jared, you are not a stranger to the board, but please, as the chairman of our Parks Advisory Board, please do give us your name and tell us where you're from, sir.
I am Jared Taylor. I'm from Highlands Ranch, Colorado, and been there since 1987.
Please proceed, sir.
All right. And I just want to say thank you to the park staff. You know, the Parks Advisory Board hears a lot of great feedback about the work that you guys do out there in the community, and, you know, especially on these hot days, it's not easy work. So thank you very much for what you guys do. So without further ado, we'll go. Whereas Parks and Recreation is an integral part of communities throughout this country, including Douglas County, Colorado; and whereas Parks and Recreation promotes health and wellness, improving the physical and mental health of people who live near parks; and whereas Parks and Recreation promotes time spent in nature, which positively impacts mental health by increasing cognitive performance and well-being, and alleviating illness such as depression, attention deficit disorders, and Alzheimer's; and whereas Parks and Recreation encourages physical activities by providing space for popular sports, hiking trails, swimming pools, and many other activities designed to promote active lifestyles; and whereas Parks and Recreation is a leading provider of healthy meals, nutrition services, and education; and whereas Parks and Recreation increases a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction; and whereas Parks and Recreation is essential and adaptable infrastructure that makes our community resilient in the face of natural disasters and climate change; and whereas Parks and Natural Recreation Areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors; and whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month; and whereas Douglas County, Colorado recognizes the benefits derived from Parks and Recreation Resources, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Douglas, State of Colorado, hereby proclaim that July 2024 shall be commemorated as Parks and Recreation Month.
All right. Thank you, Chair. And you are joined by one of your fellow Parks Advisory Board members. And Karen, you are not a stranger to the board, but if you could just give your name and give where you're from, so that all your neighbors can recognize you.
Sure. I'm the vice chair this year, and I'm Karen Hickman, and I live in an incorporated Douglas County in Grand View Estates.
All right, guys. Well, thank you very much. Commissioners, feedback for the presentation on this resolution?
Well, again, tremendous thanks. And of course, as a result of the efforts of about 87% of our voting electorate, we now have a ballot measure that passed, providing this county with about $330 million over the next 15 years for parks, open space, and historic resources. And we have heard repeatedly, loud and clear, from thousands of citizens at very large venues that the need for parks is significant. So you each play a really significant role in the hearts and minds of those we represent. So thank you.
Thank you for your leadership on the Parks Advisory Board. And there's a lot of decisions coming forward soon, and we'll be listening to what you have to say as we listen to what our residents want. So thank you for being here.
Thank you.
All right. Now we're going to move to public comment, but the board recognizes the chair and the vice chair of our Parks Advisory Board to kick us off with public comment.
Well, I think that this is great, as you've all pointed out, that parks and recreation, they are important. They're important for mental health, they're important for physical health. I think we all learned that during COVID, when it was the only places, really, that we could go and even safely congregate, that parks were important to the community, and they're still important community gatherings. You know, in Highlands Ranch, we go to Civic Center Park, Redstone Park, I play, my kids play soccer at Highlands Heritage Park. So they're important, and this proclamation, and it's great to see you guys honor the parks and the park staff and parks through this proclamation.
All right. Thank you, Jared. Karen, you can go next, if you want.
Well, I was just going to say, this is the second year that the county has declared July National Parks Month, and I hope it's going to be a longstanding tradition going forward. And personally, I'm very excited about what lies ahead for the county, and, you know, look forward to some great future years with how we're going to enhance our parks and trails and recreation and open space and historic preservation areas.
All right. Well, Chairman, Madam Vice Chair, thank you very much for coming presenting. You may retreat from the podium as we open the floor for any other public comment. At this time, is there anyone who would like to make public comment on this resolution? Go ahead, Jill. Now, Jill, you two are not a stranger to the board, but please, give us your name and where you're from, ma'am.
We'll give you my address, but I'll give you my name. How's that? Good enough. Jill Campbell, Highlands Ranch. Did you say you want to designate July 24th as pioneer or the entire month?
The entire month.
Okay. I like that July really is, in the United States, it's a tradition for, in the Western states, for pioneer. So I think that's good. I'm sorry, I walked in late, so I appreciate, I just wanted to confirm, affirm that July 24th wasn't going to be designated Parks and Recs when it's a United States holiday for many Western states. Thanks.
Thank you, Jill. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else who would like to make public comment on this resolution? And seeing none, Troy, do we have anyone online who would like to make public comment on this resolution?
Thank you, Commissioner. I have no online comment.
Thank you, Troy. Turning back to the board, commissioners, any discussion or response to this resolution put before us?
I don't have any. I've already made my comments.
And I don't either.
You know, we have a lovely resolution that we haven't passed. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
All right. There's a motion and a second. I take it no further need for discussion. Again, I do appreciate the fact that we can pause in the normal business of the board to recognize the impact that Parks and Recreation does make in this county and the value that it brings us. With that said, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And that passes unanimously, and the resolution is adopted. All right. Thank you, everyone.
Well, Mr. Chair, if I may ask for a point of privilege, I think it'd be great, I know Drew is going to take a photograph with all those representing parks here today, but before we do that, could we ask everybody here that is associated or related to parks in Douglas County to stand so we can give you an applause?
Now, none of you guys get to sit down, you have to stay standing to walk forward and come into the picture with the commissioners, please.
I'll go there. We should have had Dave back here.
All right. Continuing on with our agenda, next item up is our consent agenda. I would like to remove items H, I as in India, N as in November, O as in Oscar, and P as in Papa from the consent agenda. Do the commissioners have any other items they wish to see removed from the consent agenda today?
So can I just ask if they're being permanently removed, or we're going to discuss them?
Well, to be removed from the consent agenda, Commissioner, inherently defines that they will be removed from consent, so that they may be discussed.
I just wanted to clarify if they were just permanently removed, or they would be discussed afterwards? That's my question.
Oh, excellent, excellent question. As a matter of fact, if it pleases the board, my suggestion was that we address them first and then deal with the remaining items on the consent agenda, in case the board members would like to remove any other items. So let's begin with item H, 3H, which is fee waiver request in the amount of $325 for the Parker Senior Center picnic at Challenger Regional Park. Steve Schultz presenting for staff.
The first fee waiver that's on the agenda is for a event held by the Parker Senior Center for the rental of a shelter and adjoining grass area for a picnic for the Parker Senior Center. The amount of this fee waiver is $325. And staff is available to answer any questions, should we, should the board have any?
Okay. Thank you, Steve. Any questions from the board?
I have none.
I have none.
Steve, just wanted to make sure that, so it looks to me like from the memo, this will be for shelters A, B, and C at Challenger Regional Park?
Yes, sir.
Steve, has this, is this something we've done in the past with the Parker Senior Center?
Yes, we've previously done this for them in the past.
Has it been about the same amount?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay. All right. I think those are my questions. And then, of course, I wonder, Steve, can you verify, is the Parker Senior Center, I mean, they're a nonprofit organization, right?
Yes, they are a nonprofit organization, similar to most of the fee waivers that we receive, sir.
Okay. So we usually make it a common practice to go ahead and refund fees for nonprofits in the community?
Yes. The board has made a record of refunding fees when asked from nonprofit organizations.
Okay. Is there ever any concern about the fact that, you know, we charge fees for parks and operations? Is there ever any concern that we hear from the public pertaining to, those are fees we're not recovering when we give a refund like this, or we give a credit like this?
So the parks' fees are set up to recover our fixed charges in the parks. Those fixed charges are spread across all user groups. So that is for sanitation services, water for irrigation, and also electricity for lights. The fees are something that we bring to the board annually for review. Currently, and based on our last review last year, we are at approximately 60% cost recovery of those resources, the fees for the fixed charges in the parks. So that's what they go to. When groups come in and they ask for a reservation, some do ask for fee waivers, and we bring those forward to the Board of County Commissioner for consideration. But as was presented previously, there's about 7,000 reservations annually. And I don't have a number in front of me, but most of those don't ask for fee waivers for their activities.
Okay. Okay. I think that satisfies my questions. Does, have any other questions come to the board?
I do have one, Mr. Chair. That does raise one in my mind. You know, obviously, working with the Douglas County Community Foundation and the near 800 nonprofits that are represented there, and all the citizens and folks that are being helped by those nonprofits, what are we doing proactively to ensure that those nonprofits are aware of a fee waiver and the ability to use our parks equitably if they so choose?
So staff, commissioners, staff has a hands-on approach to booking a lot of these major events. Again, the bulk of what we book is the field reservations for the youth's sports, but we take on each of these individually, each of these events take on a character of their own. So our staff actually has a hands-on approach for each of them, and when we walk them through the process, we let them know what's available to them, so at that point in time. I don't recall getting any requests from the Douglas County Community Foundation directly, but maybe some groups that are connected to them. I think that we're, you know, we're pretty clear that they can come and ask for the board's blessing on the fee waivers. That's something we're very open about.
Well, and I appreciate that. I'm just thinking that a lot of those nonprofits may not know to even ask. So if it does please the board, we might suggest that there be proactive communication with the Douglas County Community Foundation, so that these amazing nonprofits are aware that they can get a fee reduction for use of those spaces.
Of course.
All right. Commissioner?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Let's go ahead and open this up to public comment. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to stand and come forward and speak in public comment on this fee waiver request? Jill, go ahead. And again, Jill, please, your name and where you're from, ma'am.
If it's a city park that he has used, why can't the city waive the fee? I mean, it costs, how much was the event? And I think those are productive things, to hold events, but also, can't they waive if no one's using that as a city fee and give you a free voucher to use that park? Wouldn't that be far more effective than paying twice for that, because we pay for it first for the fees, and then we pay again when you ask them for the event? So if it's a community nonprofit, I would think that our city parks, things could waive that fee for, not pay double, to water the grass and keep it up, and then pay again. and then pay again. Doubles the cost for that.
Okay, great, great question, Jill. Let's have Steve answer that as soon as we conclude other public comments. Other public comments, would anybody like to come forward and speak in public comment on this fee waiver request? And seeing none in the room, Troy, do we have anybody who would like to speak online on the matter before us?
Thank you, sir. I have no online comment.
Okay, thank you, Troy. Steve, I wonder if you could go ahead and address Jill's question pertaining to, if this is a city park, you know, are we double dipping? Or indeed, to cut to the chase, isn't Challenger Regional Park a county property anyhow?
Yes, sir. Challenger Regional Park is a county park. The fees are the purview of the Board, so anytime a group comes, we take each and every one of the fees to the Board of County Commissioner for consideration of being waived.
Okay, and so, but it's a good question because we are talking about the Parker Senior Center. They could go to a Parker Park if they so choose. Would you like to opine on why they maybe choose Challenger Regional Park?
I can't speak directly to it, but Challenger Regional Park is set up very well and it's maintained very well. So I think we see a lot of these groups come to these larger shelters that can hold their groups and their events. And they're looking for, a lot of instances, something that's nice and clean. And then we do, our staff does an excellent job of that. So I can't say to why they chose Douglas County, but I am also pretty biased and I'm trying to hide that the best I can, so.
I would have just gone right to the bias and said, because it's better. But that's okay. We appreciate it. I'm sure our neighbors in Parker appreciate your discretion and your opinion, so. Okay. With that said, we have heard from public comment and public comment questions have been answered by staff. How would the Board like to proceed with granting this fee waiver request?
Mr. Chair, if there's no further discussion, I'm pleased to make a motion that the Board of County Commissioners support a fee waiver request in the amount of $325 for the Parker Senior Center picnic at Challenger Regional Park.
Second.
Okay, there is a motion and a second. Is there need for any discussion?
I have none.
Thank you, Commissioner. And in that case, there's a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and the waiver is granted. Moving along to item I, as in India, which is a fee waiver request in the amount of $1,210 for the Rocket Run at Fairgrounds Regional Park. Steve Schultz, Assistant Director of Parks, Trails, and Building Grounds, presenting for staff.
Thank you, Commissioner. This next item is a fee waiver in the amount of $1,210 for the use of Fairgrounds Regional Park and the trails for their annual Rocket Run. This is also a nonprofit organization, the Live Free Association. They run a series of events down at Fairgrounds annually. And the proceeds from this event go directly to supporting veterans with PTSD and other veteran services. So this is, I think, our fifth year of participating with this group, and this is a very well-attended event that gives back to the community annually. With that, staff is available to answer any questions for the Board.
Thanks, Steve. For the Board, any questions for Steve?
I have none, thank you.
And I have none.
Okay, thanks, Steve. I actually, I'm sure all my questions pertained, that were pertinent to the last item are pertinent here, but I just, I do support this organization. I think the focus on PTSD relief is very, very important if we look back over the last 20 years of what our military personnel have been asked to do around the world. And so mostly, I have no real questions. I just wanted to highlight the fact that there's a great organization in our midst that is holding an event. All right, Commissioner?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. So I would agree with that. And I'm wondering if staff has any parameters for why nonprofits might not be able to avail themselves of our facilities?
We have absolutely none.
Okay, so there's no safety requirements, noise, any of that?
They need to provide insurance, obviously, for their invet, but we try to serve as many of them as we can. And as long as they are using the fields for intended use, we welcome every single person. And we're also really creative because we're able to use our facilities for a whole range of things, from softball tournaments to races to, I mean, we've even had dunk tanks in the past. We try to be very flexible with the use of our county property. And we're also very good at bringing it back from, from what they're doing. Our staff meets with them ahead of time to make sure if they're driving any stakes in the ground that we avoid any underground utilities or irrigation. But it's a, like, it's a very hands-on approach, trying to make their events as successful as they possibly can be.
That's great. So staff is meeting them out there. They're not putting any stakes in the ground without staff cooperation. What is a normal insurance premium for a one-day, two-day event?
You got me on that one, Commissioner. I'm not 100% sure. We make sure that they have the premium, and I think, I don't have that information. I'll have to get that back to you. I'm sorry, I'm not prepared to answer that, Commissioner.
That's okay. I'm just hoping it's not more than the actual fee that we're waiving. And I would think in most cases, it's fairly de minimis for a one- or two-day event, but...
The insurance has never come up as, as an issue. I think a lot of these, even our user groups, hold the insurance. But I'll have to follow back up with you on that one. We haven't heard comments on the insurance, but we work closely with risk management in our permitting process in order to make sure that we're at acceptable levels depending on what we're dealing with.
Okay. So just thinking about potential liability, and maybe this is more a question for Jeff than for you, but do we have a contract with nonprofits that use our facilities? And is there any sort of indemnity for the county if they, if somebody gets hurt or injured in one of their events?
Sure, we would have a contractual insurance requirement. I do believe Megan was online a moment ago, so we have our Risk Management Director online if you'd like to ask that question. But our contracts do require minimum insurance for any action taken with the county.
And we're listed as an insured?
Yes.
Yeah. Megan, did you have anything else on that?
Yes, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Okay. Yes, so we facilitate the opportunity for those that utilize our assets, like fairgrounds or parks, to purchase a one-day special event policy. They range in premium from $160 to around 100, or 450. It all depends on the nature of the event and the number of attendees. And we are listed as an additional insured on those insurance policies.
Okay, thank you, Megan.
Okay, Commissioner?
Nothing.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. Thank you, Steve. Please stand by in case we do have any questions from the public during public comments. At this time, I'd like to open it up to, open up the floor to public comment. If any movement would like to step to the podium and speak on this matter. And seeing none in the room. Troy, do we have anyone online to speak on this fee waiver request?
Thank you, Commissioner. I have no online comment.
Very good, thank you, Troy. All right, Commissioners, how would we like to take action on this fee waiver request?
Go ahead.
Okay, Mr. Chair, if there's no further discussion, I'll make a motion that the Board of Douglas County Commissioners support a fee waiver request in the amount of $1,210 for the Rocket Run at Fairgrounds Regional Park.
Second.
All right, there is a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Just to make sure it's, everybody hears it again, this event will take place on July 4th here at the Douglas County Fairgrounds. With that said, there is a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that fee waiver request is granted. Moving on to 3N, State Historical Fund Grant Agreement for the Micklisch-Helmert Cabin Restoration in the amount of $116,251, $251 and a county contribution of $40,204. And Brittany Castle, curator, presenting for staff.
Thank you, Commissioners. Yes, we've been awarded a State Historic Fund Grant, a competitive grant which is over $50,000 to continue restoration work on the cabin. We will continue window and door restoration, and we will reconstruct the historic porch that used to be on the front of the cabin.
Okay, thank you, Brittany. Questions from the Board?
So Brittany, no doubt, part of our goal in the county, in addition to parks and open space with this fund, is historic resources. Can you help us understand a little bit more about some of the partnerships that you enjoy with the state and the federal government in terms of protecting historic resources?
Yes, the state has been very supportive of all of our properties, whether it's historic or archaeological. And the cabin in Roxborough specifically has been a great partner with the Roxborough Area Historical Society and the Lamb Spring Board of Directors, which we do tours with both of those groups out there.
That's great. And so how much is the state providing in terms of resources to this particular project?
Total, I'm trying to remember the last, including this grant, will probably be close to 100, or $300,000 in awards.
That's great, thank you.
Commissioner?
I have nothing.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. So Brittany, what is this going to buy us? I mean, obviously, these are state funds that we're bringing in. There is a county match. But what is this, these funds going to buy us in work on this cabin?
What is the funds going to buy us?
Yes, ma'am.
It's going to give us the opportunity to have the cabin available for the public more often.
Okay, okay. I mean, is it available for the public now?
Not till we're done with work, and then we'll be able to have more tours.
Okay, yeah, because that's something that does come up among the Commissioners often, is we, you know, listen, we have a brief but fragile history to preserve here in the county. And yet, a history that is not visited and used by the public is, is it really preserved? So the goals of this work is to get it to where it can be open to the public and can be a matter of public visitations?
That's correct, yep.
Okay, fantastic. I think those are my questions. Okay, any other questions from the Board?
I have none.
I have none.
Okay, thank you. Let's go ahead and open up to public comment. Is there anyone who would like to come forward and make a public comment on this grant agreement? Jill, go ahead. And Jill, once again, please give us your name. Tell us where you're from.
No, I don't like public speaking. I like playing my guitar in my isolated home by myself. But I do remember Abe, Commissioner Layden, saying, when this came up a couple months ago, I think it was in the fall, is that right, six months ago she reviewed this? Is that correct? Whatever. But you presented it to the Board then, and the question was, how often and what are we preserving? And you said archaeological things, but why isn't it in the Douglas County libraries, like our libraries, so people, more people could view it? So the 130,000 or so, 16,000 more funding for this project, is it something that will return the money, or is it just kind of preserve it for a family or archaeological history that no one will see? Or would it be better off in a glass case where our children in libraries view it more often than, you know, searching, I don't even know where the location is, but, just question, no comment. I just remember a pointed direct question from Abe, Commissioner Layden, quite a few months ago was, wouldn't it be better for more people to see it for that kind of money?
Okay, let's see if we can address that question there once we complete public comment, Jill. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward and make public comment on this grant agreement? And seeing none in the room, Troy, do we have anyone who would like to make public comment online?
I have no online comment, sir.
All right, thank you, Troy. Brittany, now, I wonder if you could help, help add a little clarity with Ms. Campbell's statement and kind of inherent question there?
So as far as archaeological sites, those will not be open to the public. That's against Colorado law. It's just not public information. For our historic sites, we're trying to get them to the point where people can go visit them, maybe not always go inside, but it will be restricted with tours that people can go see these sites. To have them open all the time to the public puts the structure at risk. We would have to put more money into them to keep them going. So having temporary openings and tours is the best way for meeting the public interest. And we are also going to start having virtual tours on our virtual museum where people can see inside and outside of historic properties as well. Along with artifacts and archaeological stuff as well, you can also see stuff on our virtual museum. And we will be partnering with Douglas County Libraries to have more public displays so that people can see artifacts in person as well.
All right, excellent. Thank you very much, Brittany. And any, any other questions from the Board?
I have none.
I have none.
Nor do I. Okay, so I think we heard the facts. We heard from the public, an excellent question, by the way. What, what action would the Board like to take on this grant agreement?
Mr. Chair, if there's no further discussion, I'm pleased to make a motion that the Board of County Commissioners support the State Historical Fund Grant Agreement for Rock Shelter artifact analysis in the amount of $249,983 and a county contribution of $10,000.
Second.
All right.
And I am sorry, I'm wondering, is that P or N?
P.
That's P, right?
Yeah, Commissioner, if you'd like to go ahead and do N.
Okay.
That was the matter before us.
Sounds good. So I will make a motion that the State Historical Fund Grant Agreement for Micklisch-Helmert Cabin Restoration in the amount of $116,251 and a county contribution on that project of $40,204.
Second.
All right, there is a motion and a second. Any need for discussion? And all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that is approved, and the county manager is authorized to execute the document. All right, moving on to State, to item 3O, State Historical Fund Grant Agreement for Site 5DA.265 in the amount of $14,826 and a county contribution of $1,647. Brittany Castle, curator, presenting for staff.
So we have been awarded a grant to do, it's called a site assessment grant. So we are going to go out to an archaeological site. This is one that was excavated by CDOT back in the 90s. It's one of our largest collections that we have at the repository, around 90,000 artifacts. The entire site was not excavated, so there are still sections where there are artifacts. So this assessment grant is going to allow us to go out and see how the site has eroded. Is there anything we can do to stabilize it and protect it? It's going to give us next steps if we need to do further excavations, or we can just keep it stabilized.
Okay, thank you, Brittany. Any questions from the Board?
I have none.
And I have none.
So this kind of goes to Jill's question earlier, I mean, but this is an actual archaeological site. Now, I understand that we are, you know, making an assessment to see if erosion control needs to be done. Do we expect any excavations and recovery of further artifacts?
It's possible. I don't know 100% yet. And I do want to mention that this is also listed on the National Register. This is a site important to the state. They recognize that. And we'll be using this site for training as well, for training archaeologists and advocates as well.
Okay, okay, cool, cool, cool. And so, again, going back to Jill's earlier question about the earlier item, the artifacts that were recovered from prior excavations at this site, those are at our repository. But to kind of hearken back to a point that you had made, Abe, when we were in discussions with our library board, would these be artifacts that would be appropriate for consideration to be placed in static displays, like, say, in our libraries?
Some of them, yes. Yes.
Could you give us an idea of what some of them are?
We have monos and matates, which is handstones used on grinding stones. They'd use to process plants, food, things like that. We have other tools, projectile points. There's a variety of good stuff in the collection that we can, we can put on display.
Okay, yeah. I think I, I mean, I'm sure I'm not speaking out of turn with the Board of, we would certainly like to hear some ideas on what could be done. Of course, these artifacts in particular, just because of the information we've been provided as a part of this item, but any of our, any of our items... of this item, but any of our, any of our items that are in the repository, I'm sure the board would love to hear your ideas on how to get those out to public display.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions?
No, just thank you, Brittany. We appreciate your expertise and your great work. I think the same comments, or, I mean, no surprise, I've said the same thing for, for many years. It goes back to that philosophical question. If a tree falls in a forest and nobody's there to see it, did anybody actually, did the tree actually fall? Of course, it did, but I think when we have limited resources, we always want the greatest good for the greatest number and the most eyes and educational opportunities for these critical artifacts. So continue to echo the sentiments of our, our public and our chair that that partnership with the libraries I'm really looking forward to. Thank you.
You know, Brittany, I'll just add that you spent a lot of time working on a website that shows all of the stuff that the county has already. So if the public really wants to see what we have, you spent a lot of time and did a great website. So people can go there and see what we have in our custody. So thank you for the work you did on that.
Absolutely. I absolutely agree with Commissioner Thomas there. Okay, let's go ahead and open the floor for any public comment. Is there anyone who would like to come forward and, and provide public comment on this grant agreement before the commissioners? Go ahead, Jill. Jill, I've got to ask.
Go ahead.
Can you please give us your name and where you're from?
Jill Marie Campbell. My father gave it to me, my middle name. So it's great. I'd love to show what my trip to China looked like, too. I'd like to put that, too. I don't mind these things, but I do know that our kids would love to see the grinding stone of an Indian, is it Indian kind of reservation artifacts? I'm sorry, I, I don't always quite know what these presenting, what they're for. I'm not part of Douglas County. I mean, I've just moved here. So to preserve, I don't even know the, where is that? Like he said, if a tree falls in the forest, do we see it? I, I'm exploring Douglas County. First time I saw 85, I was, and I just ate truffles, truffles last night and saw, I'm like, oh my gosh, this is incredible land out here. And so 116,000, or are we doing a lot of self-interest groups when, I mean, great, I think that's great. And to raise funds for those things are awesome. I have to raise funds and I give funds. But I also know we are facing critical challenges. And last night, we had a water commission meeting, and wow, they hardly have money to work with to preserve our pouring water here in Douglas County and our health, I believe. Some, at some point, the stamp should be our future of perhaps the lead-filled fire, if anyone saw, destroyed 600 acres and shops. People didn't want to go. It was smoky. And, and so our livelihoods, if no one saw Minnesota and Iowa, yesterday, the levee broke in Minnesota. That dam has destroyed pumps in Iowa and 19 counties. A federal emergency flood, so you could do a ski boat in the amount of water. They got over, I think, four feet of water or six feet, something astronomical. So we're facing a lot of crisis. And these little things is what the government does, or federal government, that costs a lot of tax dollar monies. And does it give back enough for what we're facing? And I, I know what we're facing. I've, I've seen too much what we're facing. And I just present that idea is when we pass 360 and 100,000 and 1,200, and great, let's do it. But let's do it at a cost that things are already present. We have parks. We've got great parks. Let's use our resources in a very wealthy, the most, second in the nation, to cut costs so we preserve our floods and fires like Leadville and support the people on 85 that need wastewater projects that, in Sedalia, that have been there 50 or more years. And the, I think the infrastructure, I think we have designated things for certain things, what I just kind of gathered from what Abe said last time, is that this is a preservation fund? So great, do it. That's great. If that's set aside and it's only for that allocated, do it. But where is our self-interest becoming?
Is it water or pottery artifacts? I agree with what she's doing. I love it.
All right. Well, thank you, Jill. Actually, Jill brings up a really important point, Brittany, and I wonder if you could provide us that context. There's, there is a bit of a so what. It's, it's, it's a chunk of ground. Archaeologists are going to go out there, they're going to sift through, they're going to push aside some dirt. What's the so what? Why is it at all remotely important?
It's a non-renewable resource. Really, like, once it's gone, it's gone. So we try to preserve what we can. Most of what we excavate now is all for mitigation, whether it's a development going in or a site is threatened for some reason. But once, once we, if someone picks through it, or we scrape it for, for development, they're gone. We don't have Native Americans coming and settling anymore. So it's, there's less and less around anymore to preserve. So we try to keep what we can.
Okay, thank you. All right, any further, wait, I totally jumped the gun there and went, because I thought Jill asked such a great question. Is there anyone else who would like to make public comment on this matter? Okay, seeing none in the room. Troy, do we have anyone to speak remote on public comment?
Thank you, Commissioner. I have no online comment.
Awesome. Thank you, Troy. All right, bringing it back to the board for any further questions, discussion, or action on the State Historical Fund Grant Agreement and authorizing its execution by the county manager.
Mr. Sheriff, there's no further discussion. I'm honored to make a motion that the Board of Douglas County Commissioners support the State Historical Fund Grant Agreement for Site 5DA.265 in the amount of $14,826 and a county contribution of $1,647.
Second.
All right, it's a motion and a second. Any need for discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And the county manager is authorized to execute that document. Moving on to 3P, State Historical Fund Grant Agreement for Rock Shelter Artifact Analysis in the amount of $249,983 and a county contribution of $10,000. Once again, Brittany Castle, curator.
We have been awarded another competitive grant. The maximum amount you can receive is $250.00. We were just short of that, $250,000. We had two previous grants for this site, which were to excavate the site. We are completed, we have completed excavation. We have recovered around 52,000 artifacts. So this grant award is to analysis and interpretation of those artifacts. We will continue to partner with tribes. So this grant actually qualified for BIPOC, which is Black Indigenous and People of Color. That, this year is new to not actually have a cash match for that, but we went ahead and kept our 10,000 with it because our goal is to bring tribal elders from the reservations to, to the area to help with the analysis interpretation of the artifacts in person. So any little bit will help with that transportation and housing and for them to be here for that. So we're hoping to complete artifacts interpretation and analysis with this grant. And once that is complete, then those artifacts will be available for display.
All right, thank you very much, Brittany. Questions from the board?
I have none.
I have none.
My, so this is the same, is this the same rock shelter site that the board toured?
That's correct, yep.
Was it last year or the year before?
Year before.
The year before. And so that's where we had the in situ remains of, of a woman. It looks like that had been disarticulated, so probably exposed in the past and then reburied. So this is that site?
That is the site.
Okay, did we, did we get anything back from the lab from, about that site from the last time?
I cannot disclose that information.
Oh, man, come on.
Sorry, it's not public information.
Completely understand, absolutely completely understand. Okay, so, but this is more of the same, same sort of work to continue to excavate the, the site, see if there's anything else worth finding?
We are done excavating. So this is just to analyze the artifacts, and all of the remains are already done, and that can, information can be provided to you later in a report.
Okay, yeah, I think there might be some interest in that. Okay, well, cool. Any, any other questions from the board?
I have none.
I have none.
Okay, let's go ahead and open up to public comment. Is there anyone else, is there anyone who would like to come forward and make public comment on this matter? All right, seeing none in the room. Troy, do we have anyone online who would like to make remote public comment on this grant agreement?
No online comments, sir.
All right, very good, Troy. Bringing it back to the board then, for any discussion or action.
Mr. Sheriff, there's no further discussion. I'm pleased to make a motion to support the State Historical Fund Grant Agreement for the Rock Shelter Artifact Analysis in the amount of $249,983 and a county contribution of $10,000.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Any need for discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And that is, and the county manager is authorized to execute that agreement. Thank you. Appreciate it, Brittany. You know, you know I'm a geek for this stuff. So thanks for putting up with us and all of our questions.
Thank you.
All right, returning to the consent agenda, having not heard any other items to be pulled off and considered separately, how would the board like to proceed with the items on the consent agenda minus item 3H, 3I, 3N, 3O, and 3P?
I have a motion to approve the request in all items A through AE, with the exception of H, I, N, O, and P of the consent agenda.
And I'll second that motion.
All right. At this time, even though we do have a motion and a second, is there anyone who would like to come forward for public comment on any other items on the consent agenda? Seeing none in the room, Troy, do we have anyone who would like to speak on any items on the consent agenda that have not already been addressed by the board?
No, sir, I have no online comment.
All right, thank you, Troy. There is a motion and a second to adopt the consent agenda. All in favor say aye.
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 Aye. And consent agenda is approved. All right, let's go to our regular agenda items. And let's start off with item 4A, a 2024, 2025 Denver Regional Council of Governments Older Americans Act Contract EX-24015 in the amount of $704,422, with the required county contribution of $88,094 for a project total of $792,516. And Jennifer, well, no, you're not Jennifer. You're, you're Allison. Go ahead and take it away, please.
Yes, Jennifer is at Diesel this week, and so I get the opportunity to present for her.
Please do.
So Allison Cutting with Community Development, representing staff. Well, you're missing a great PowerPoint presentation. Public podium. Oh.
I don't know why it's not shown.
All right, well, that's okay.
I think you did the right thing, but you didn't start and stop.
There we go. There we go. Thank you very much. So Douglas County has been notified by the Denver Regional Council of Governments, Dr. Cog, that the county's application for older adult services and assisted transportation has been recommended for funding and issued contract number EX-24015 for 400, $704,422. A local match contribution of $88,094 is required for a project total of $792,516. The funding is for community-based services that help older adults remain independent and continue to live in their own homes. The contract will provide funding for assisted transportation and services for Douglas County residents aged 60 and over from July 1st, 2024, through June 30th, 2025. So Douglas County opens a biannual solicitation for agencies to submit proposals to offer community-based services to benefit our older residents. The agencies you see listed here were selected to provide these services, which enhance mobility and support residents in improving their quality of life and allowing them to remain active members of their communities. Older adult services include chore, personal care, and homemaker, in addition to assisted transportation, which provides door-to-door transportation. The county does not offer these services directly, and instead, sub-grantee agreements will be executed with these local area agencies to offer services. Through these partnerships, Douglas County is able to leverage county match contributions of $34,366 in cash and $53,728 of in-kind match contributions to provide $792,516 in total program support. These programs provide more than 19,200 units of service for our older residents. The request before you today is the approval of Dr. Cog, Contract EX-24015, in the total amount of $792,516. And this concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, thanks, Allison. Questions for Allison?
I have none, thank you.
Allison, thank you for that. You know, one question I have, are you aware of the number of nonprofits representing seniors in Douglas County?
I do not know that number, no.
Okay. I'm just wondering, you know, obviously, we want to honor and support and elevate the work of all nonprofits that are serving seniors. And I just wonder if any consideration or opportunity to apply for these sub-grantee awards were offered to additional nonprofits?
Yes, so we offer this, it's on a two-year, we do it every two years. And that way, we don't have to have the nonprofits applying every single year because it is a lot of work for them to apply every two years. So we award it on a yearly basis, but it's for a two-year program. And we will be opening that up again this year for non, any nonprofit can apply for that.
Okay. So did we have any other nonprofits apply for this award?
We haven't opened it up for this year yet. So
Oh, for this year, okay.
Yeah, yep. These applied to, this is the second of that two-year program period.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
Allison, I wonder if you could answer the question for me pertaining to the county in-kind match. You know, obviously, it's kind of nice. We get an in-kind match that exceeds our cash match. But what goes into that in-kind match?
So that's made up of both staff salaries, and then we can match it with other grants that we receive. And so it can be other contributions can match this grant. So other state grants can match this grant because it's a federal grant.
Okay. And then remind me how this goes. We accept today, should we choose to, accept today. But then, don't my colleagues and I on the Dr. Cog board vote on the actual awarding next month at Dr. Cog?
So this money was voted on at the Dr. Cog board already. And I'm not sure what is coming up.
Okay, so this was our vote in April, where we went ahead and awarded the breakouts to the different jurisdictions and then to the, to the partners that work directly with the AAA.
That is correct. So back, I think in April, you know, we went through the Dr. Cog review and answered their questions. And then the Dr. Cog board voted on it and decided the funding limits. And then we were just notified that this is how much we're receiving for these different areas.
Okay, cool. All right. Okay, thank you, Allison. Any other questions for Allison?
I have none.
And I have none.
All right, very good. Let's go ahead and open up to public comment. Is there anyone who would like to make public comment on this, on this grant from Dr. Cog? Go ahead, Jill. And Jill, I got to ask, please give your name and where you're from.
Um, yeah, sure. I think I have to hit stop and start, and I think that's what did it. Maybe not.
Now Jill, please do give your, do direct your comments or even questions to the board. And if we need to adjust to a certain slide, we'll make that direction for Allison, okay?
I had one that I'm interested, which is the finances, thank you.
Did you just hit start and stop? Oh, da-da, okay. Let's see, was it the one with?
Just one way you lay out the units per, per the cost of the services for the different, like angel, the different entities.
This one?
Yeah, there you go, sub-grantee awards. So when I'm looking at this, the unit number is the amount of people you're serving, correct? 19,000 units, whether they use transportation 10 times, but the amount of transportation, is that where we're at on this?
And Jill, please remember, we will answer your questions after we address here are the public comments.
So the units, thank you, Jake, you keep redirecting me, I can get quite off with my mind. So when I'm looking at the personal care, the homemaker, the chore, these, you talked about transportation, these are the same people being served, and so you're looking at Aging Resources, 534, and then maybe the homemaker, the same 534 people or people served on that?
And so Jill, we'll address, we'll have Allison answer those questions.
So my question would be, if the total number of services combined, whether it's multiple people or using different one-of-each service, or the number of people serving is 19,273, then like you said, there are so many resources in the community, so how many people are you serving with these 19,270 units when they can get repeated care? How many, what's your population of you're serving in this? Thank you.
Thank you, Jill. Great, great question. All right, is there anyone else who would like to make public comments on this grant award? Seeing none in the room. Troy, does anyone have public comment online?
Thank you, Commissioner Teal, I have no online comment.
All right, thank you, Troy. Okay, Allison, well, go to Jill's question. I mean, how many people does this represent, or is these, are these units hours and multiple people are soaking up, or individuals are soaking up multiple of these units? Can you clarify that for us, please?
Yeah, you sure can, and thank you very much for that. With the assisted transportation, those are the number of one-way trips, and with the other chore, homemaker, and personal care, those are units of service, which is basically one hour. And it is not taken up by, you know, you don't have, for instance, in chore, one person getting 534 units of service. It's sort of, it does depend on, you know, on what the, what the category is and how many units they can take. Yes, we do have for assisted transportation, for instance, we take people to dialysis who need trips to dialysis, so you might have the same people riding once a week to their dialysis appointment. Other times, you have people taking it just once, maybe once a month to, let's say, Seacore Care's, the food bank. And so it really depends. So I don't have a number for the number of individuals that this serves, but it isn't, it is, you know, it is a, you're not limited to the amount that you can get, but it's not taken up by just a few people. It does serve multiple families and multiple people.
So what is your population?
Ooh, hang, hang on a second, Jill.
I can tell you that our population of Douglas County, I was looking actually this morning, I believe it's over 83,000 or 60 and above. So for most of these, for our senior services, it's for ages 60 and above. Some of these, personal care, homemaker, you do have to meet additional requirements to receive those services, and I don't have the number of people who would qualify for that, but we have about 83,000 people who would qualify for these services.
Okay, okay, thank you. Hey, Commissioner Layden, so dialogue, next year, I'm sure we are going to have Allison or Jennifer before us again, because this is a yearly program that Dr. Cog administers under the AAA. Edna, would we like to know that, the number of people actually served for next year's presentation?
We would, and I appreciate the discussion and your leadership as our lead commissioner on the Older Adults Initiative. Where I go with this, Allison, is great, but we need a needs analysis to look at gaps in terms of the number of citizens that would qualify or be in need of services, and how are we serving seniors in our community that, that do qualify? The 19,000 number is, is great, but my sense is that there are so many more seniors that, that need services. And what we have heard, both from the summaries I get back on the listening tours that George is leading, in addition to the, the years of work and travels in the community, it's transportation, 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 and then it's social-emotional. You know, that is a major precursor for potential lack of longevity. When, when older adults don't have a social-emotional connection, they tend to die sooner. So those two are really big priorities for me. I know we're working closely with Aging Resources on significant and visionary project, but I always go to, are we achieving our goals and meeting the gaps? And I don't know that we have a number today or analysis today that would, that would provide me with sufficient explanation of what the gap is. So long-winded answer of saying yes, I think we need more information.
You bet, you bet. Commissioner Thomas?
I have nothing.
Thank you. So, you know, your, your point is salient, Abe, in that the thing to understand it, and it is something that Allison did mention, is that these are tightly qualifying services. I mean, each one of the individuals, so the 80,000 across the county that would be qualified for these, those are tight qualifications that, you know, and not all of us qualify for. I guess technically, I'm getting there at the age of 56, but even beyond age 55, beyond age 60, not every individual in the county age 55 or 60 would qualify for these programs. And so one of the key findings I think we've had in the older, the Older Adults Initiative is that we do have gaps. We have gaps that these awards through Dr. Cog probably cannot address. Now, I think, I think your request for a, a gap analysis is, is probably very, very salient because, well, I've told you guys this, the whole reason why we have an Older Adults Initiative is because we win awards, we do everything great. Allison is a rock star down at Dr. Cog. The AAA thinks we have a great, great crew down here. And yet, then I will run into one of our neighbors in the grocery store, and, and there's, I hear something that says, no, there is something we could be doing, probably something we should be doing more. And I got to tell you guys, I'm not saying that that's going to be free either to, to meet these needs that we have in our community. We may be going into a budget cycle here in the future where we need to make a decision that if we are going to fulfill these needs for our older adult population who are not served by these services, yeah, we've got to go back and kind of like, kind of like the wise words that Jill shared with us, make the determination of what stays, what goes. We might need to make room in our current budget and decide, does, does the grass of parks get a little, get a little longer between mowings? Is there something we do not do in order to fill that gap? So excellent, excellent point made, Abe, and something that, well, obviously, you know, I'm going to look forward to work figuring out in the years to come. All right, so we have heard from the public. Excellent discussion by the board. Returning it to the board for action. Oh, hang on a second, Jill. You will have another, ma'am, I'll have another option for you in open public comment, please? So, so hold, hold your water there, ma'am, hold your horses, okay? All right, bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Sheriff, I'll make a motion to approve the 2024-2025 Denver Regional Council of Governments Older Americans Act Contract EX24015 in the amount of $704,422 with required county contribution of $88,094 for a project total of $792,516.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and contract approved. All right, thank you, Allison. All right, up next for item 4B, reciprocal license agreement between the Douglas County Board of County Commissioners and Highlands Ranch Metropolitan District Benjamin Pierce, Department of Public Works and Engineering, presenting for staff.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, thank you for having me today. As you mentioned, I'm here to talk today about the proposed reciprocal license agreement between Douglas County and Highlands Ranch Metro District. The purpose of this license agreement is really to formalize an existing somewhat informal process between Highlands Ranch Metro District and Douglas County regarding assets that each agency has on each other's property. So for example, Highlands Ranch Metro District has lots of beautiful landscaping and irrigation infrastructure that is included in Douglas County right-of-way currently, and similarly, Douglas County has some roadway assets such as traffic signals, traffic signal cabinets, sidewalks, things of that nature, located on Highlands Ranch Metro District open space property. So really, kind of the way this came about was management at both agencies decided it was a good opportunity to formalize an agreement and really just formalize the way that it had previously been done. So, you know, it allows for, you know, less staff time to coordinate back and forth on things that are, you know, very routine. And additionally, you know, it still includes, like if Highlands Ranch Metro District needs to close a lane or do something like that, they would still need to get a permit from Douglas County to ensure the safety of the public on our roads. And Highlands Ranch Metro District has already approved this at a previous board meeting. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions or comments.
All right, questions from the board?
Ben, what additional cost to the county will listen here?
This is no cost. So it's a reciprocal license agreement, and there's no cost exchange, it's really just a matter of streamlining the process and formalizing it in a legal document.
Okay, so going forward, help me understand how, how the process will operate?
So for existing infrastructure, like Highlands Ranch Metro District's landscaping, they will continue to operate and, you know, water and, you know, fix irrigation as problems occur without any direct notification because those are existing assets, but any new assets, so if they wanted to put in new landscaping or new irrigation system, then they would have to get written approval from Douglas County. Similarly, on our future capital projects, if we need to install any traffic cabinets or traffic signal poles in that open space, then we would be able to do that once we receive written approval from Highlands Ranch Metro District.
So how, thank you for that. So how did it operate in the past? So they had to get written approval from the county in order to do that maintenance?
It, so it wasn't really a formalized process, and that's part of how this came about. So I think in the past, it was mostly just, you know, written, written approval through, you know, emails or things like that. And so this, you know, the whole point of this is really to consolidate that and make it a formalized process.
So how, and I know we're half an hour past due to get into our land use, I don't want to belabor this, but I guess I'm always very cautious about abdicating any specific authority that the county has. I mean, unfortunately, Highlands Ranch is not incorporated, it's, it probably should be in my regard, in my opinion, and it's long overdue for that, but it is a metro district. And for all purposes, Douglas County is the government for Highlands Ranch. So can you walk me through a hypothetical, both of how this was operating in the past and then how it would operate after we, in the event we choose to pass this?
Sure. So in the past, I think it would be a, you know, a coordination between the Highlands Ranch Metro District, either general manager or their engineering director, and Douglas County. So I'm, to be honest, I'm not entirely sure how some of these initial agreements were set up with, you know, installing the original landscaping and irrigation infrastructure. A lot of the irrigation mainline is in Highlands Ranch Metro District easements that were platted along with Highlands Ranch. But in terms of, you know, specific agreements, there has been license agreements, individual license agreements that have been executed for specific installations of traffic signals or, you know, encroachments into the open space. So my understanding is that this isn't really changing the process as much as it is just formalizing how it's been operating in the past.
Okay, maybe it's just me, but I'm still a bit confused about how, I don't know if our county manager, county attorney can provide more input on this.
So it is my understanding that they contract, Highlands Ranch Metro District contracts out this work, they have an irrigation company, they have a landscaping company, and that landscaping company was giving them some pause when it came to doing this work because they wanted to make sure that they had the county's approval. And to make this a little bit easier to contract with their, their vendors, it's to show that there is a existing relationship and that they can do this kind of work. Previously, my understanding, having spoken with their attorney on this, is that it was done kind of ad hoc or annually, when there's an annual need or per project.
I don't know, I am a little troubled, but all I'm seeing in the packet is the one-page, two-page resolution without a whole lot of additional detail. For me, I'm inclined to make a motion to continue this so that I can get some more information. I don't like the idea of abdicating authority to the metro district without oversight and approval from the county, but I might be missing something.
I don't think that you're, you're missing anything. I do think that the relationship has existed in such a way that they felt that it was comfortable for them to ask this of the county.
We also do have a representative from Highlands Ranch Metro District here today, Ryan, if, if you'd like to hear his side of things or any additional information from Highlands Ranch Metro District.
Mr. Sheriff, I would.
Okay, well, I have no objection. Let's go ahead. Ryan, please come forward, please state your name and restate your organization.
Certainly. My name is Ryan Edwards, I'm the Director of Public Works and Engineering for Highlands Ranch Metro District. And as Ben was saying, this, the intent of this is to provide streamline to the process, and it also protects both entities for, and gives them the right to go in and do restoration to any of their facilities, whether it be county facilities that were impacted by Highlands Ranch work or Highlands Ranch facilities impacted by any work done by Douglas County or third-party staff. And just, it helps to establish a protocol for restoring both parties' infrastructure should anything be impacted.
Okay, okay. Commissioner Layden, back to you, any follow-up questions after hearing what we heard from Ryan?
Yeah, I'm not registering and opposed today, but I think I need some more information about exactly what we're doing. I, I think abdicating county authority or approval over maintenance of unincorporated Douglas County gives me some pause.
Okay, Commissioner noted. Let's, Commissioner Thomas, any questions from you, ma'am?
Well, it sounds like to me that we're not abdicating authority, we're just giving each other authority to take care of each other's property or responsibilities that might happen to cross over on others' property. Is that right, Ben?
Yes, that is correct. So the, the non-notification actions would be relegated to only existing assets that have already been approved or have already been established, and it would require written approval from Douglas County in order for Highlands Ranch Metro District to install any new infrastructure that would be required. And then similarly, you know, for Douglas County to install anything in the Highlands Ranch Metro District open space, it would be required to receive written approval.
So it just sounds like this is formalizing a process that has probably been in place for 40 years, that's been informal, people have known each other for years, maybe there was a recent retirement, that because of that retirement, people have changed positions at the metro district, and so now this informal process that has been taking place for years at the metro district, and so now, this informal process that has been taking place for years is now just being codified and put into this process. Is that right, Ben? And I see Jen, Jen, sorry, Janet, Janet back here shaking her head.
Yes, that is my understanding.
Anything further, ma'am?
No, I'm in support of this, the metro district has already passed this as well.
Okay, yeah, I guess, so, I guess where I'm falling actually is, and I would like you both please to provide the explanation, of course, Ben, we're going to put you on the spot in terms of a staff opinion, but then, Ryan, I'd like you to kind of help me out, because, yes, I guess, I'm, I'm sort of, I'm not, I'm sort of the opposite side of the coin from you, Abe, on this one of, hey, if it's worked, why are we fixing it? Is, is there instances that, actually, this hasn't worked, because it, it sounds to me like we're throwing layers of bureaucracy on ourselves on, on a solid partnership that has existed for 40 years. So, so can you tell me why, no, no, there is benefit here to proceed?
Absolutely. So, one of the requirements, or one of the reasons that's, you know, specifically important to the Capital Improvement Projects Group, which I'm the supervisor of, is, you know, new installations or as we reconstruct intersections in Highlands Ranch, obviously, we have aging infrastructure there that's requiring, you know, modifications and replacement, you know, when we receive federal money, for example, on our Broadway and Highlands Ranch Parkway project that has federal money, one of the things we have to do is go through CDOT's right-of-way plan review process, and part of that is proving that we have the ability to, to operate and to, you know, place things in Highlands Ranch Metro District property if that is proposed, as it is on the Highlands Ranch Parkway and Broadway project. And so, what we would need to do in that case is execute a license agreement for each installation, so each project would need its own license agreement, whereas this, being a reciprocal license agreement, can apply to all future projects that would require that.
Okay, Ryan, please.
An example would be if a handicap accessible ramp needed to have work done on it, this streamlines the process, if the county learns that there is, you know, the pavement's heaved and they need to go in and do improvements to the sidewalk or a ramp, but it's adjacent to open space property, then there's a notification given to the Highlands Ranch Metro District, but the, the formal process for going in and securing a permit and gaining access is covered with this agreement. It's not an individual permit that's required for this particular instance, it's covered under this agreement. But there will still be, the intent is communication amongst both parties, significant, you know, major work requires, there are permits that both entities have that will still need to be required, but this covers a lot of the smaller, less impactful improvements or maintenance-related items.
Okay, 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 I think I get that. And, and so, then, okay, I'd like to, listen, I came from municipal government, and municipal government has inherent rights given to it by, by the Colorado Constitution. At the same token, I like to respect each one of our communities, and so, we don't have stuff like this, we don't have an agreement like this with our municipalities because the roads that are there are inherently theirs. You know, they may have it, as a matter of fact, I know that Casa Rock has it with metro districts, but it's, we don't necessarily have these skin kind of agreements with our municipalities on.
Correct, I'm, there could be some on the very borders, you know, on the nexus between the, the local agencies or the municipalities and Douglas counties, but for the most part, you're correct, and those would just be one-off maintenance or license agreements to cover the maintenance and operations of those facilities.
So, those will be site-specific, those aren't going to be umbrellas with that municipality, really like the way this is with the metro district?
Correct.
Okay.
And the, the staff reasoning for it is, you know, there are, you know, lots of, you know, miles of roadway that are owned and operated and maintained by Douglas County throughout Highlands Ranch that have some of these landscaping and irrigation assets.
Okay, okay.
So, Mr. Chair, I found the line, and I'm going to ask the board to unanimously oppose that, this, or at least get a majority to oppose. So, on the second page in four, it talks a little bit about the traffic control infrastructure. It says it shall remain the property of the county, but modifications and alterations to that traffic control infrastructure may only be made by the county with the consent of the district. And specifically, we've endeavored for the last several years to make a modification to Lucen Boulevard to be Kendrick Castillo Way in honor of Kendrick Castillo, and we were, I was very disappointed to receive letters of opposition from nobody other than the metro district. Again, I see this as a somewhat underhanded way of finding approvals for the metro district on a modification to traffic infrastructure that we control, and I don't appreciate it, candidly. I think the metro district was misled and encouraged not to support modification to the signage that our citizens, the family, and our community overwhelmingly have supported. I was disappointed to receive that letter, and I don't like this language being slipped in to a contract, and so I'm going to ask, I'm actually going to make a motion to deny a reciprocal license agreement between the Douglas County Board of County Commissioners and the Highlands Ranch Metropolitan District.
Okay, that motion is heard. I'm going to go ahead and second it. Before we go to decision, however, let's go ahead, staff, gentlemen, from the metro district, Ben, thank you very much, Ryan, I'm going to ask you to retreat from the podium, and let's go ahead, let, Commissioner, I mean, unless there's objections from the board, I really think we should hear citizen comment on this, but the motion and second does stand. So, we're opening the floor for citizen comment, if there's anybody who'd like to come forward and speak on this license agreement, now would be a good time. Is there anyone in the room? Jill, come on forward. Jill, you do have to give us your name and where you're from, ma'am.
So, I'm just putting my comments up into two and refer back to, first, his comment, and then I'll go to the woman's, Dr. Coggs' financial statements. First and foremost, you know, to me, it sounds like they want to do, you know, roadwork by open spaces, so if something's wrong, you know, like sidewalks or something, it doesn't sound like major construction on roads, it sounds more like, hey, you know, maybe we've got a flood in a park area that blocks par, you know, swing sets, or that's how minor I feel that you're asking for the contract, it doesn't sound like reconstruction, and I also support the Kendrick Castillo, Castillo, I was in the city or the park, I forgot what it was called in Highlands Ranch, I'm sorry, I just went there twice, but where the, the concerts are at, pardon me for not remembering the name, but, you know, I read about what he did at STEM, and what a remarkable young boy to stand for truth without any badge or, you know, gun with him, but he stood for his peers, and I do, would support, I saw the funds that, I wish I had a credit card then, I would have done it in the park because you could fund that project, I would have supported Kendrick with his family and, and made that an honor just like sergeant on a street, whatever sergeant in Highlands Ranch, that would have been very beautiful for me, what a great young man. I honor him very much for his courage and what he stood for in a country full of war. And if you didn't see, we have a national, just like a healthcare, mental health crisis now, just now, we're stating we have a gun crisis. Well, let me tell you, we had a gun crisis before we funded Mexico coming across the border, regardless. The second thing, Dr. Coggs' financial statements, if you look at, she said it's serving 83,000 people, and you say it's kind of a select people who qualify for that, maybe already have in place, you know, some kind of funding, but if you divide those 788,000 dollars by 83,000 people it's serving, you're funding 9,500 per person, you know, if, if that is the case, per service, not each person, but per service. And then, if you look at the unit hours, if it's divided in unit hours or transportation, regardless, it takes about an hour anyway, so she had about 20,000. So, you're looking at, you know, kind of a more, you know, free Uber in a sense, because, like, we have a large population of over 60 coming up even more with less social security funding, and that needs to be spread out as eight years come, and our seniors get 70% when those social security funds run dry from the government, which they are. So, that will be a crisis in itself, it is already, I see with my own mother. But, so, I think we need to, when we're looking at the amount of things we're passing, and I support many of these things, I have a special needs daughter, for her to have transportation to school every day, I was, I was sick in bed myself for six years, and for her to come home on a bus and secure and get my mother back to the apartment, but that would be my priority as.
Thank you, ma'am, appreciate your comments. Is there anyone else who'd like to make public comment on the motion on the floor? And, yes, ma'am, please come forward. And, ma'am, please give us your name and tell us where you're from. Would you, I take it, ma'am, you're okay, you didn't, was I mistaken, did you raise your hand?
No.
Yeah, would you like to come forward and speak on this matter?
No.
On the reciprocal license agreement between Douglas County and Highlands Ranch?
Not, not, not on this matter, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay, no problem.
The vote is closed.
No problem at all, ma'am, no problem. Troy, do we have anyone online who would like to speak to this license agreement between Douglas County and Highlands Ranch Metro?
Thank you, Commissioner, I have no online comment.
Okay, thank you, Troy. Okay, bringing you back to the board for discussion and possible action. Motion on the floor, and Commissioner Layden, please correct me if I get this wrong, is to deny this license agreement between Douglas County Board of County Commissioners and Highlands Ranch Metro District. We've heard from public comment, but Commissioner, would you like to lead the discussion, and I would assume in favor of the motion?
I would, and just to reiterate, I find this sneaky and a bit underhanded. I'm disappointed in the Highlands Ranch Metro District for not supporting one of their own that passed away tragically several years ago. It's unfortunate that those, several individuals on that board were misled and encouraged not to support this work, when again, a vast majority of our citizens have. I'm not interested in giving the metro district any authority to overturn the decision and the will of the subcommittee and the county to change Lucen Boulevard to Kendrick Castillo Way.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner?
So, it's my understanding in reading the packet, and from what staff has presented, and the Director of Public Works, Janet Herman, has shook her head when I outlined what I believe this is about, is this is a process that has been going on for over 40 years, and it's putting in writing what has already been taking place. We had a representative from the metro district here who, who explained this to us, and this has nothing to do with naming a sign, it's giving each other, the district and the county, the opportunity to continue working together like they have for years. And I'd just like to put in the record that I am a resident of Highlands Ranch, and we are not interested in incorporating, as, as much as Commissioner Layden keeps saying we, we need to incorporate, we don't want to incorporate, we have low tax rates, we have great government in place already with the metro district, and so, it's our choice if we want to incorporate or not, and right now, we don't want to. So, I need to put that on the record, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. I, you know, I stated my concerns earlier that we're adding a layer of bureaucracy, I do appreciate staff input from the metro district and from our own staff on the benefits, yet at the same token, I still retain enough doubts to speak in favor of the motion with Commissioner Layden. I mean, Abe, I, thank you for, for, you know, bringing that element forward and actually, you know, putting it into context that we've been dealing with, and so, yeah, I'm, I'm a denial on this one. I'm, listen, I, I'm happy to hear another shot at it, but I guess I, my comment would be to the county manager, I'd like to have a bit more review when it becomes before the commissioners again. Again, it sounds like we do have a favorable opinion of this license agreement between two staffs, that's great, guys, but I need, I need to have a little more discussion on it in order to approve it, because I'm a denial today without further review. Further discussion?
I'm just going to add that I think for our Director of Public Works and Engineering, Janet, and for our county attorney, my ask is, is always proactive. You know, no doubt, this is a longstanding, multi-year initiative of the Board of County Commissioners. I don't like receiving an item on the agenda with no staff analysis, it's merely a resolution, and I'm hunting for information, you know, and of course, I think the, the language is pretty clear that it would be contradictory to an initiative that we're trying to carry forward. So, I would just ask for, for additional proactive analysis from, from you and staff in the future.
Okay, Commissioner?
I am in support of this, I think it's important that we continue to partner with metro districts and municipalities throughout the county, this is something that's been going on for years, and their board has already approved it.
Yeah, and, no, well, that's absolutely true, I mean, I do think we need to have good cooperation with all of our communities here in the county. I mean, I, I think of the, the review that we've given this week with an intergovernmental agreement with Casa Rock, and, and how we're going to have it, you know, from the county attorney for a whole week prior to moving forward on it. So, again, I'm a denial today, that'll be my vote, but I, I, I heard staff, I heard the benefits, I'd like the opportunity to bring it back forward and give us an opportunity to go through it again. Okay, any further discussion? All right, there is a motion to deny the license agreement between Douglas County Board of County Commissioners and Highlands Ranch Metro District, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
I'm opposed.
Thank you, Commissioner, and that denied, that license agreement is denied. Okay, so, moving right along, Commissioners, we are, we are running late, unfortunately. Next item would be citizen comments, obviously, I think we do have citizens who are present who would like to make comment. So, once again, as is our tradition on the board, I will pull the board, do we wish to proceed with citizen comments, knowing that we do have citizens present who would like to make comment?
Mr. Chair, my view is that we're nearly an hour late to get to our land use and public hearing. I appreciate the chair in this county and our staff focusing on the good work of the county, and I think you have done a phenomenal job of providing ample opportunity for the public to comment on business before this board. I think we have seen in multiple instances, public comment hijacked for political theater, and I, for one, have, have no interest in, in hearing more of that.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner?
I think that we work for citizens, and if citizens are here to speak to us, no matter what we think they're here to talk about, we should listen to them.
And I agree with that, but you texting people to be here and manufacturing outrage is something that I've grown weary of over your eight years here.
Now, I haven't texted anybody, and I'm tired of these accusations of you all the time.
Please let, let the board discuss.
Very firm evidence of texts that you've sent to people to come here and talk about things that you think are important to you in your political career. What's important is the business of this county, and I want to remain focused on that.
As for myself, I do see what the item is on our land use public hearing, we don't have a land use item, it is a public hearing, I do realize that inconveniences staff, but I, apologies to staff in advance, I probably should have said this three years ago, but we're here for the people of this county, and so, I, I, I do, as I am willing to be inconvenienced, in order to hear from the people of this county, I think we should go ahead and proceed with citizen comment, but Commissioner Layden, your comments are absolutely noted, sir.
Thank you, and I'll just add, I always appreciate citizen comment, and we have a variety of means for people to comment to us, including our B O C C email, which is obviously categorized and accounted for. Each of us were elected by over 100,000 people and are all in active conversations with those we represent.
Thank you, Commissioner. At this time, we'll open the floor for citizen comments, you are welcome to comment about any topic other than those that appeared on today's agenda. It is an opportunity to share your thoughts and ideas with us, please state your name and where you reside prior to making Please state your name and where you reside prior to making comments. You will have up to three minutes. Obscenity and any comments calling for criminal or violent action are prohibited and actually can result in your removal. Commissioner comments, if any, will follow all citizen comments. Is there anyone who would like to make citizen comment? Yes, ma'am, please come forward. Ma'am, give us your name, tell us where you're from.
I am Linda Dawson, Highland Ranch. We're living in a time of universal deceit. Telling the truth is a revolutionary act, and the author is unknown. I retired from teaching in 2009 after 31 years of teaching. I feel I retired at the top of my game, and I'm proud of my accomplishments. However, only in retirement have I started to uncover some terrible truths. If you do not know what I'm talking about, you'll be shocked when you do. It's hard to absorb these things, having been told so many lies by the media, such as newspapers, all local and national media, magazines, I could go on and on. I decided a tiny thing I could do is help this county to get into politics at the grassroots level. That's the advice I had heard over and over, and that's why I'm here. I feel compelled, once again, to defend Laura Thomas until I find the truth that is in my mind about Laura Thomas is not true. I've asked for evidence of Laura's wrongdoing several times, nothing. She's gone through a lawsuit and a slew of nasty mailed postcards, and she's been taken off committees, no reasons, nothing. I have learned nothing. Nothing to persuade me that my truth is tainted. I've heard about money taken from the taxpayer for lavish trip, a lavish trip, none of it returned. I've heard of the lawsuit over and over, no crime committed. Each time I come to this podium, I feel like a dog begging for a bone. It's humiliating. I admit, as I get nothing in return, promises to Laura have been broken. But there is a good side. I've learned a lot about our grassroots politics. Awareness is better than my previous ignorance. God knows the little bit I've been doing, I'm trying. The truth as we know always comes to light. The Titanic did not happen the way we were told. I don't know if any of you know that. Our county politics have not been truthful the way we have been told. Things on the national level, we know, are horrendous, but that's not my focus. I will continue to focus on this grassroots level. And now that I see I have no more time, may I end with the biblical quote, Luke 12, Chapter 12, 2, "Nothing is covered that will not be revealed or hidden that will not be known."
Thank you very much, ma'am. Excellent comments, very much appreciated. Is there anyone else who'd like to make public comment? Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead, please. After you, please. Thank you very much. Today, I'd like you to go first.
Well, okay, come on forward. Well, we'll hear from you first, and we'll get to Jill again. Okay, you are not a stranger to the board, but please do give your name and where you're from for all your neighbors here in the county.
Catherine Michelson, Highland Ranch. Who centers the censor? This is an important day in the constitutional republic, where we have the right of free speech and can demonstrate our freedom to vote. We as well, thank you for giving us this time to speak, because you don't always do that. First, I wish to repeat some of the issues we've previously covered, mainly the two versus one repression of Commissioner Thomas, taking her off her committees, forbidding her of the chairmanship, confiscating her credit card, and shaming her for questioning a constituent. Isn't that your job, asking questions? According to Barbara Walters, the consummate questioner, there is no such thing as an unsuitable question. It's the answers that are unsuitable. And add to this, the deal made with a handshake in front of a witness, and before that, the promise to repay the 17,400. Okay, secondly, let me relate, that I do not do social media. So by the time something reaches me via a friend, everyone in town knows it. I feel it dishonorable to see a Douglas County Commissioner sitting in a hot tub and on the same thread with a buddy standing in a bathtub, looking out from a ceiling-to-floor window, bare naked, bare butt naked. I sincerely don't care what anyone does in their home or at their private places. I just don't want to see those photos of a commissioner on the internet. Please keep it private. Thirdly, there has been conversation about putting quotes on this beautiful paneling. Your constituents deem appropriate chamber of shame and blame. Nonetheless, please consider Ezekiel, where the Lord says, "I will remove from you your heart of stone and give to you a heart of flesh." This is a hard job. We, we understand that. We are not unappreciative. I have sat in these chairs and watched you give 1.5 million dollars to charities, and, and what you did today, we appreciate what you're doing, but we do not appreciate the other things that you're doing. And what I have to say to you is that when we pray for our commissioners, we pray for all of you. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate your comments. Is there anyone else who'd like to make public comment? Jill, come on forward. You, Jill, you know I got to say it, please give us your name and where you're from.
My name is Jill Campbell, and I applaud these commissioners to work through difficult issues in the hardest time in history. For Laura to have a voice against two strong men, they have come to consensus, nothing, look at your own family sometimes, like we're family when we're working in a community, and they have done remarkable things to progress their relationships, and I believe that, in all honesty. I do know, I appreciate both your comments in every way. I, I know sometimes our older generation, if I can put, my 54th birthday is just in a week, and I'll celebrate it alone. My kids are in the US Air Force, I'll see them in another year. So, and my child was taken away from a church member in Douglas County, and I am so grateful. I texted the leadership of that church today and said, "I have no regrets." It pushed me out a door into wonderful people like this, like Jeff, and Doug, and Abe, and George, and Laura, that are educated, that if you put yourself in that position, could you stand up against the wind and the fires and the rains we're facing? I think excellent, and I would applaud Laura, and George, and Abe, and those as well. Sorry, do you want applause? So let's put aside our little things, I think this was last year and the year before, because I've only been here two years, and I applaud Laura. It's not easy being a woman. You know, if, if, I published a book, and I've had more adversity alone in Highland Ranch than I've ever faced in my life. I've had more money stolen, I've given more money. I've helped more people, and they've helped me more. We are facing wind, fire, stone, and floods, if you didn't see Minnesota and Iowa. So you can stand alone as a tree right now, and you can be the lonely one, like Abe said, and no one will visit it because it's standing alone. Or you can look at the vast wealth, as I looked at Trussell's Seafood last night, the great, great clam powder, I felt privileged to eat such a good meal, and look over vast farmland that may not exist in the future with fires, like we saw in Leadville, 600 acres, and those businesses at the front of no one coming to see and wondering if they're going to make their own rent or move to another location, be homeless. And these are the realities, as we face the biggest economic crisis, and we can have ignorance or we can keep fighting this war, and Laura can keep instigating it if she wants. Whatever she chooses, I don't think she chooses this. She is running for a great position, and I support Laura in that. It is not easy being a woman in this era, when we're facing things like, do you want a baby or not? Do you want to die? Is a doctor going to go to jail because of me, because I need help? Will I even get help? Is there help? And our hospitals are collapsing, our banks are closing, and if you're that, two green up grass, try going to Denver, where I had people from Five Points, and even fed, fed the homeless last week down on Sixth and Saddle. And are you that privileged, that your clothes represent and all your riches represent who you are outside, and that's the only thing you stand for? Because we're facing the damnedest biggest crisis in the nation, and these guys are standing at the front, they're families.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Very much appreciate your comments.
Look at this man, stand up. This is one protecting your homes and our firefighters.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate your comments.
God damn, god damn God, you're selfish.
Before we do go to commissioner comments, I will share with the board communication I just received from the Sheriff's Department. So Douglas County Search and Rescue has been activated to assist in locating a hiker in District One Patrol District, and I'm sure that that is being handled by our search and rescue volunteers as staff, as well as our Douglas County Sheriff's Department. With that said, Commissioner comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I want to reiterate my sincere appreciation for all citizens that we represent, the 375,000, to share their views with us. And I, I want to speak directly to both Linda and Catherine. I appreciate you. I value your service and your long time work as teachers, as educators, as grassroots political activists. I love that. I love the scarf that you wore today, representing the United States of America and the freedom of first, a freedom of expression. I will tell you, from my point of view, I will never censor anybody in my life and prohibit them from expressing themselves as they see fit. And if you've been to the Louvre in France, or the Academy in Florence, you'll see a lot of really interesting artwork, very similar to, I think, what you described. But I want to go specifically to, to the information, because I am a big fan of accountability, transparency, and information. I have zero secrets. Everything that I do is very public, and I have nothing to hide. And so I'm in a very blessed position, and I want to make sure that any information you need is provided to you. What is very clear and on the record is that Laura Thomas violated the county's policy manual for the Board of County Commissioners, and unfortunately, has spent the bulk of her eight years attacking and undermining her board. It is not common sense to expect support from a board that you are constantly attacking and undermining. No, I sit on about 18 different boards, never in my life have I encountered anything of that regard. But what I would ask our county attorney and county manager to provide you is with the open record of all of that information, so that you can review that for yourself. My commitment is upstream governments, and you're welcome, ma'am. I think the focus is not to relitigate the past, but try to work upstream for the benefit of those we serve. And Catherine, I really appreciate your comment. You have been here and have seen the work we've done for first responders, and water, and transportation, and the homeless. We're one of only two counties in the state that has reduced overall homelessness. We have eliminated veteran homelessness entirely in Douglas County. That's a big deal. Those are the issues that I want to remain focused on, and I hope you will join me in that. But I want to make sure that you have all the information that you need. Again, I have always supported strong women doing great things in our community. My mom is a strong woman, my 18-year-old daughter that just graduated high school is a strong woman. I have endorsed strong women for offices in this county, and they have prevailed. So I believe in you and your work, and then of course invite you to receive any and all information that we've provided. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner?
I just feel the need to put on the record that I have been investigated twice, and I've been cleared of all wrongdoing. Thank you.
And I'm going to clarify that you have been cleared of criminal wrongdoing, but not civil wrongdoing, and you have been found to have violated the county's policy manual, specifically the ethics manual for the Board of County Commissioners. So you can restate whatever you'd like for those in the public that are listening, but the facts are the facts. And again, I would ask our objective and neutral county staff to provide that information directly to our citizens.
Commissioner, do you need to respond?
I do not.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to other business, does the board have other business to be brought up at this Seeing none, county manager. Is there a county manager report, sir?
Nothing today.
Okay, thank you. Well, folks, this comes to the end of our business meeting, and apologies for all who have attended. I do know that we went over, over our schedule. I thought it was very important work that we had to do today, so thank you for your patience. Our next business meeting will be held on Tuesday, July 9, 2024, at 1:30 PM, and we look forward to seeing everyone there. We are adjourned.